Yes, sir. Can you tell us your name, what grade you are, where you go to school?
Oh, good.
My name is Andrew Smith. I come from the Brown University School of Public Safety.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, my name is Travis Sorensen of April Medical Science. Currently just a freshman this school year and graduated college.
I'm Aaron Bell. I'm currently a freshman here at the university. I majored in mass communications today because I'm trying to listen. And I'm from here, graduated from Chapel.
My title is Proctor. I'm a projects and communications coordinator for the office of the mayor. I am a resident. I graduated from Bowway High School in 2019 and then in 2023 graduated from U A P.
I'm Angela Howard. I'm a native of both Arkansas. Actually, a graduate of Boston Chapel, this school. And also belong to U A P D. So, hey, I'm here to raise some awareness. And I'm the mother of Weydrick's.
Good mother. Very impressive in person. Okay, so this is what I want to ask for if you can be honest with me. Especially since you are from here and you, in particular, who are college students, have decided to stay here. What have you seen that you want the city, just growing up and all recently, what have you seen that you want the city to do in terms of growing or repairs or whatever? Without, we have to delve into the problems. You know what our problems are. But what do you want to see change, right? And what would make you stay, kind of like when you graduate from college, to start your career or open a business or whatever that you plan to, if that could be possible?
I know, like, growing up, yeah, I've been places, like, in Chile and got, like, Spain and wow, these different places that growing up. One thing I want to see, um, see, um, you know, me, me staying here, like, more job opportunities for, like, different, um, people coming out of college, stuff, there's a lot of graduate jobs and I agree, but they're really good for, like, first kind of college people out there. So, I just want to see if I grow, if I'm productive or I'm doing this. So, this is, this is a growing city and we got a lot of positive, but it's not going to show because pride ring, all this stuff, so just do a little thing and have a...
Mr. Smith? Can you tell us what are some of the things that you like about your city? And some of the things that you may hope either could change or that you wish you had here? Just whatever something you like about the city?
I always thought there were things to do. I feel like a lot of stuff to do. And we might not help, we might go out of places to learn.
So, what kind of things would you like to be able to do? He said that he would wish there were more things to do, there's not a lot of places to go. He just wished there were more things to do. So, can you tell us what kinds of things you would like to be able to do in your home city?
Well, I would like to be able to go to a lot of parks and stuff and show up.
Yeah, go to a lot of parks and have a lot of fun, okay.
And I would also like to, like, live, just go outside and do some...
Go outside and do something. Mom, we're gonna get, we know, anytime you leave, we're gonna hear what you guys say. Okay.
I'll ask that question.
Yes, oh, same question as far as as a college student. But as someone who grew up here, what are some of the things that you saw and experienced in the city that you would like to see grow or change? And then as a college student, senior college graduate, what would you, what would you look for that would compel you to stay here to start your career and start your development?
Honestly, I want to say very, because I did before COVID, probably, I can't say COVID, but like, really active. I really love that when y'all, as we came together for certain events. But now since COVID, after COVID, if there's a problem, like, certain issues, some people want to go outside, some people got more connected, maybe not necessarily connected, but brother. So, we got a big family.
One of the things I was gonna say I actually like about Pineville is the community. You know, everybody loves everybody in good or bad. And, um, as a college student, one thing I would love to see here is making, so next semester, I'm gonna go to a major university, I can text all this time, which is essentially making clothes. And for me personally, as a, as Pineville is standing right now, I don't feel like there's much of a market for that major. So, that's one thing that would keep me here. And another thing that would keep me here that I noticed, you know, as always, maybe there wasn't too many things to do, especially if you didn't play sports. You know, if you didn't play basketball, you didn't play football, there wasn't many things to do as a teenager or as a adult.
So, what kind of things would you like to see then, and maybe now, to do that doesn't exist right now?
I know, a little movie, movie theater, that's a good attraction. You know, when you sat on the wall, that was a little, like, that's probably what I'm saying right now.
And then I don't know if you answered it. When you talk about market, so, you know, given your nature, there would need to be a larger market for what you intend to do as a, um, as a new business. Are you saying then that you need to see a larger population? Are you saying that a market so that you can actually open the business, assist in opening your business, or what do you mean?
Uh, I wasn't necessarily talking about, talking about any of that just as I just don't see.
So, the job itself, you're really looking for a job.
There is definitely ways, but you speak about other places there are, there are.
Okay. What would I like to see? Yes, so I'm gonna ask you as a, as a faculty here, as a mom here, as a resident, you know, um, and you grew up here. So, what are, what are some of the things growing up, um, did you have that maybe you no longer have, that the kids no longer have? And then what would you like to see change now?
Well, just like everyone else here, uh, definitely in the eighties and nineties, we had a lot of more employment opportunities. You guys, like, giving, um, the youth of employment starters and some of which is a great opportunity because when I was 14, my first job was in county market, which is now food small out between, yeah, true. I was 14, paid for food stamps or half. So, it was like the early nineties, but we had things to do. My son mentioned parks, we treated, so two parks, um, he's into skateboard now. And so, we go to the Royal, I know, I just found out the hill in White House. But I'm guessing just having the things that we have to go to Little Rock to do, like, the movies or junk zone or, you know, Michael Ray Shrek, if they're doing for them, just don't have theaters in here. Just certain stuff like this, and you can't get them out the house because I'm doing a couple of places where, you know, there's not amusement for the kids. Like, there's no swings, there, you know, we had it for them, we had the physicality, and now we don't have it as much in our house in those quarters, places. And so, maybe that's what he's talking about, he goes outside. So, you have to make your homework, you have to ride a bike, you have to do, and, but if you don't have a bike, or if your family can't afford your bike, then you have this swing, you have this slide already there for those kids, and we don't have it, so we may go to the park. And then some parks have the, you know, sure down, we know that the, the laying out in Pineville, original office, sometimes, so it's, you know, you can't use it sometimes. So, we have those barriers that we have. I think just having anything to do in the city is, is what everyone wants. Because we're used to the past and having that and growing up and having, and being saying, now, well, these kids are having, and like I said, if you're not in sports and you're not traveling with the, you know, sports anymore, you know, because my son plays youth football, baseball, and we go to different cities. So, they're able to see different things, they're able to travel to different states. But if you're not able to afford your child to be in sports, then they're not gonna get the opportunity, right? And so, they need the opportunity somewhere, you know what I mean?
And so, with that, I want to say this. It is really, change is really hard. Change, um, requires people to do more, it takes people out of their comfort zone. Oftentimes, change, um, is gonna change the flow, um, of resources, of work, um, uncertainty. A lot of us get used to things being a certain way. And it is really easy and it's really hard to do the same thing, but keep calling for things to be different. And one of the things that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really clear about, you know, when I made the decision to run, I knew I could lose. I was very comfortable, um, in a city where I had never seen any real serious challenge. I never took my voters for granted, I always ran race. But, um, you know, I served in the house for 10 years and I still had six more years that I could serve and host it. I felt light, I got feedback, I was doing a decent job. And, um, so, I stepped outside of my comfort zone just again, making the decision to run. And I ran because I wanted to be a changer for the people of Pineville. I ran because all the things that you all said at the tip of the day are things that I heard, I heard while I was serving in the house. Are things that, um, you know, people want, where people want to see a difference made, especially if they're young. Because a lot of the people who typically vote, people who are retired, have this. Houses paid for, cars paid for, they had their career, they came up at a time in Pineville where they had things to do. And now, where a lot of those things are lacking for you and will be mounting more if we don't take action, we won't be effective. And I say, I mean, people who typically vote, that's people who are basically 50 years and older, over half of them. The, the people who typically vote, the most active voting population, 50 years and older, half of them are 65 and older. Yeah, yes, a quarter of the voters are 50 to 64. That's my age set. So, people who are making decisions for everybody are people who are in the demographic where we have ours. Right? While y'all trying to get yours. But this is what I want you to know. The largest voting block in the country, including in Pineville, Jefferson County, we vote to give Pineville a vote, are 18, 40 young voters. But guess who votes the least?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, 40. And I understand when young people look around and think, I'll vote that girl. But we can look at these most recent local elections across the country, people's vote count. And so, that's why I'm coming to you. I'm not taking you for granted, never have. I've always come to the university, the college, the high school, to talk to you about what your vote means, talk to you about the issues. That's what we have to do to make you know how important your vote actually is. There is no one whose future is more dependent upon the decisions that are made at the ballot box, the reelection time, than you are. At, whether at the statehouse, decisions that are made about modulating taxes, where resources go, what happens if people fall on hard times, resources that come to cities, all of that happens. Who represents you on the city council? Who represents you in the mayor's office? All of those decisions that are made, um, happens at, at the level where you could vote and have an impact to determine what we do. And I'm coming to you to let you know what I'm doing, why I'm doing it, why I try to compel the city council to put this measure on the ballot. And we say this, putting it on the ballot does not make it happen. Putting it on the ballot gives you the choice. So, if you go out and vote and you say, Mayor, the city council put this on the ballot, I heard you talked about this for three months, and I don't agree, and I'm my vote for it. And if 50% of people who vote plus one say no, if that happened, and I say, okay, I did my job. I got the information, I made sure that you had a choice, I came up with some solutions for problems that ail this city, that people, and I came up with some solutions for resources so that we could give, as my cousin says, give people what they want. People said they want their streets overlaid, they want these potholes filled, people said they want their kids to have something to do, they want the parks upgraded, right? The people said they want more jobs. How many of you know that we have a whole port, like, where barges can come into the city and drop off? Yeah, you, everywhere I go, people don't have it. We have a whole port, we have one of the oldest ports right in the, off the industrial, um, by the industrial park.
Is the port you referred to the one, like, Alpes or?
Pecaton, yeah. Right off Pecaton. Do you know how many cities have a port and have a railroad in town and have a highway interstate, a federal interstate? And have airport? Very few. But when you look at history, we talked about history, when you look at history, everywhere during whatever kind of technological boom was happening to determine where the jobs made, is where people were moving. So, whether people were traveling in and out of the country on ships and trying to trade, right? Going back to before this place was settled, people trading on the river. That's where trade took place, even during the enslavement of black people, of agriculture, of people, when it was legal then. All of that took place on the river, then went out of the country. We built railroads. That's why there were a whole bunch of people in this country, in this state, centered in Little Rock, Fort Smith, Helena, and Pine Grove. The railroad brought what commercial enterprise, commercial activity? It brought us where people were. Then after railroad, what do we have? We have interstate. So, now all, they connected states, they connected cities within states. And so, otherwise, you had county roads, you had dirt roads, right? You see old movies, anybody look at the film, they had dirt roads, right? With these, when cars were first built, you had dirt roads, then you had gravel roads, then you had asphalt and concrete, became technology, made it easier to travel, cars changed, right? Then you have what? So, guys, and, and with all of that, all of that has continued to evolve and upgrade and become different ways of travel and trade. Which is why people have often said, oh, how many of you grew up in the country and say, oh, Pineville is dead? Pineville ain't never gonna be dead. Too much money here. So, it's, we have a four-year university, a two-year college, right? We have a bank that's near or dear there.
I think what they mean by dead is what we're talking about.
It is.
Not having recreation, not having things to do.
For sure.
They call it a retirement city now, but it's...
But it's really...
Not just people are coming here to retire. I'm actually, what's happening is people are passing away.
You made, this is where I was gonna go with that point about people were saying they're dead. We have an infrastructure that we're not using. We know enrollment has gone down here. We have the bones and the makings for a thriving economy. But if we do not repair our port, jobs won't come here, industry will not come here. What does industry mean? It means educated workforce. We have a four-year college and a two-year college. But if enrollment keeps declining here and at Sea Ark, and people keep passing away, and we don't invest in our infrastructure, because we have one of the oldest ports in the state, if we don't fix it and make it shiny and new for people to say, oh, I wanna go here, like, people see what y'all saying, I wanna go where I can go see a movie. If we don't have a movie theater, or let's say we had one and only did two movies and the seats were small and uncomfortable, and you couldn't get any legal supply, I'm gonna still be done, we can still go someplace else. Right? Because we want the luxury.
We would give to the big cities, have some options.
And you, you want options. And when you work hard, you all are working hard for your education, to make sure you can live a certain lifestyle. If we can't afford that lifestyle here, how do we draw people in? How do we keep you? How do we keep you in school? Along when you finish? That's what happens, we leave, and then parents still here. So, your parents stay here, eventually you go, you have a family someplace else, because that's what happened in my generation. You go someplace, you've been, you make your own family someplace else, you come here for homecoming, you come here for Christmas, you send your kids here to be with grandma and papa, right?
For the summer.
For the summer. But eventually they go. My parents are still with me. If, if God's will, they will perceive me in death. If they live to be 100, it'll be another 20 years I have. After that, the house will be, like, empty. And if it's a decent condition, I'll be able to sell it to somebody else. Who I'm gonna sell it to if nobody's living here? Who I'm gonna sell that house to if the house is nice? Who I'm gonna sell that house to if families are not moving here the way you would move someplace else? Why are you gonna stay if you can't go to the movies, if you can't get a job, if every time you drive somewhere, you gotta drive over potholes? So, this is really important. And this is not about me trying to pass a tax so we can have a bunch of money to spend on nothing. And I'm not saying that, we've had examples before, we've collected taxes and we have an aquatic center, we have that wonderful facility at Six and Main, the Sinus Bank Park, it's wonderful. But y'all had cost money. That costs money to operate. And if you don't operate it, it's gonna what? It's gonna close. So, if we are not forward-thinking, if we don't have a plan to figure out how we use what we have to get more, you give it away or you're up handed. It's almost like you're making a plan to graduate high school and graduate college to go someplace else and leave to us. And I'm telling you this, there are some people who have concerns about transparency, accountability. We have learned from the past, and we've had several tax initiatives, well, Pity for Progress was great, but Pity for Progress was too static so that we later had to raise private levels to get the projects off the ground. Right? That's why we want to identify priorities. And then, what we want from the last initiative, we want to use our city council, we want to use the mayor's office, we want to use city government to make decisions where our voters will hold us and make us accountable. And we will spend the money according to what's in the resolution, which will come after the passage of ordinance. And we will pay attention, pay dollars for those priority projects. Fill the potholes, repair our port, youth programs. We want to partner with churches. A lot of people have to come back outside. How many of y'all go to church? How many of those churches are pretty empty every Sunday? So, but you can still have people in those churches who we serve, who could create a program, the church is already there, we don't have to pay for worship order. You can partner with Boys and Girls Club, the seven sites, at churches that meet the criteria. They may have an after-school homework program. We know Bethany has a track program where they serve 20 or 30 students every year, right? We could invest in the projects and the programs we have in our own parks. Gay does, um, STEM program, and they just have a vice game day. Boys and Girls Club does amazing things with students. It's our tops, top, people can, tops, they're opening a whole new facility. So...
Then sort of building.
Why wouldn't we support what we have, partner with our churches, upgrade our parks so that there's always something for our institution in safe spaces? When we talk about safety, I get tired of people calling us partners, I don't know what I do in presence. But we know what people say. We know that there are places in Arkansas that are, have far worse issues that also still have gun violence. We also know that just like in Pineville, crime was going down across the country, we've been more aggressive. We know that we have been very successful at significantly lowering gun violence among youth. We went almost, experienced one or two when, after that streak, we've gone almost 700 days. And we're using that same model for GBI to start to address the vested violence, which is where a lot of violence occurs. That coupled with a decline in many other areas of crime, we are experiencing 11% overall crime decline. But that, what we were able to do by bringing our law enforcement together, bringing our community together, we have pastors going to schools, visiting young people, we have, and, and all of that, that, even that takes money, GBI, pastors going to the schools, we gotta do both. Last time we had a town hall meeting, we were talking about, um, we were talking about trash and people dumping and the beautification of the city and the cleanliness of the city. We have made improvements with the right funding so that we can fully, um, we can have full capacity with code enforcement to address that, with our street department to address the potholes and overlay. It would be more than just spot checking. It would be more than, than that. We really could cover our entire city. We really could cover our entire city.
Would you like to fix some, uh, did you power like the trash and, um, the potholes? Are y'all familiar with the bigger, um, bigger neighborhoods, uh, instead of small neighborhoods? Because I know, like, my neighborhood, the potholes, the, um, the street lights, the trash, it's.
Costing.
It was constant, and you need one of my neighborhood now, like, at night, late at night, it's.
Dark.
Pitching back, like, going down the main road, even going, going on the neighborhood, it starts, can't see nothing.
What neighborhood do you?
Um, I say, um, going towards, especially like, uh, uh, Bear Q, Bear Q, like, towards the middle, like, middle part. Uh, like, it's, uh, pitched back, you can't see the rest of the potholes, they're, they're bad, like, the trash is bad. Maybe, maybe it was, like, it was, it was, it was constant, there's, you know, progress coming even out of there. Like, I know a lot of your kids staying, staying in the neighborhood, so it's like, they don't, they don't come outside, like, just have a, like, I would say there's nothing you can do out there, you can't actually fight. Sometimes can you be out there, or you want to be out there because the trash is spiking, and the potholes, and then, and then the street, streetlights, so.
Let me answer that, so it is definitely our priority to address long neglected areas first. What we did, um, in the beginning, we was wanting to contract with the only company in the area with, um, was called a hot mix asphalt machine to, which has, which is, is, has longer lasting effects with regards to potholes. And the area is not right up late, along like thirteen, fourteen, six areas. When I was driving around, you had, um, potholes, you had big old gaping, like, big, you had this table, you had waves and cracks. So this machine is, it'll address like this much, and it's called a burn. So you have one or two potholes, and it'll fix that, those two potholes with a burn. And it's, that'd end up like super pretty, doesn't look like nothing ever happened there, but it does cover it up and it's neat, okay? And we, we actually posted some pictures, and we're going to post some more, but the bottom line is, I prioritize areas through our street department, and what we did as a pilot, to pilot this and see how it would go, we put, um, we identified any burns in all four wards. The contractor did wards two and four, started on three, and was not able to get the hot mix that really has to be extra from the local asphalt company, and so it just kind of came to a stop. And we, you know, thought, what are we going to do, and we just voted on buying our own machine.